Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the City Council Committee the whole for February 21st, 2018, to order. At this time, we're going to do our moment of silence. And again, I think we've seen instances of some of our young people with the recent violence in Florida. But I think it's important, no matter where we go and what the position is, it's important to consider the safety of our children, wherever they are and whatever circumstance they're in, and be all, I know we all join together to be committed to that importance and valuing our children and our next generation. With that in mind, please a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Alderman Ambrose, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance? Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Rossen?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Cool?
Here.
Tompkins?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
All present, your honor.
Thank you very much. And again, as we start this meeting tonight, I want to wish you a good evening. And again, as we begin this meeting of our city council, I would like to welcome all those in attendance and also those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance, and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cell phones and other handheld electronic devices as they can be disruptive and can interfere with the audio system here in the chamber. If you wish to address a council on a specific item that appears on a committee agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that standing committee. You will also have an opportunity to address the city council under public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself or the committee chair, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. You are asked to limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that, and I know you all will, observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. With that, we'll continue with our meeting, and first, we have, if there is a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
Thank you very much. We're going to have, we have six public hearings this evening. Just to note, what a public hearing is literally that, a public, and we're going to hear. This is not a dialogue period, this first part of the meeting. We listen to your ideas or input, and we take that in consideration to not have a dialogue back from us at the dais. Later on in the meeting, this will be on the agenda, all these items are again on the agenda, and there will be an opportunity for discussion, not only by the council, but also by potential individuals that may have something else to say. So with that, we're going to open up our first public hearing area is community development, and Alderman Gripp will lead that discussion.
Thank you, your honor. We have one public hearing for community development this evening. I opened the public hearing for the ordinance for case REZ 17-08, being the request of Palmer College of Chiropractic to rezonate 37.63 acres, more or less, of property, generally located between Harrison Street and Pershing Avenue and between East 12th and 5th Streets, from R4, moderate-density dwelling district, R6M, high-density dwelling district, C1, neighborhood commercial district, C2, general commercial district, C4, central business district, and M1, light industrial district, to PID, planned institutional district. And so to open up this public hearing, I'm going to allow Dr. Mark Yori from Palmer to come up. He's got a presentation of exactly what the request of the petitioner is.
Thank you, your honor, and thank you, council, for time on your agenda tonight. In fact, the slides that I have today, to give you a little bit of background of exactly what motivated Palmer to be on your agenda tonight, I can provide to the city clerk, I have 12 copies. And I assure you, my students sometimes find my presentations less than exciting, so there's only just a few slides here, eight or so, so bear with me. But I want to provide some background on exactly what motivated Palmer College to request some of the planning changes that we have. To give you a general idea of Palmer College, I know many of you have been by Palmer College, but perhaps not on our campus, and really understanding what we do. Palmer was chartered in 1897, and it is really a single-purpose institution to chiropractic training. We currently have three campuses, a main campus here in Davenport, Iowa, and branch campuses, one in California outside of San Jose, and another outside of Daytona Beach in Florida. We have 55,000 graduates, and we have about 22% of the market share of 10,000 students studying chiropractic. There are 15 total programs in the U.S. studying chiropractic, and about twice that many outside of the U.S. We've been nonprofit since 1965. Our annual budget is $72 million, and we have a large research footprint here. In fact, our research center is larger than all of the other chiropractic colleges combined for about a $5 million annual budget. About half of that, $2.5 million, is constituted from NIH grants, extramural grants that come into this area for the 30 or more full-time researchers that we have employed. We see about 70,000 people in our Davenport clinics alone, then additional people, obviously, in our branch campuses. As we look at Palmer and what we do, we're really focused on four aspects of our mission. First and foremost, student learning, also patient care through our clinics, research, which advances our patient care and our student learning, and building strong communities, not only social communities in the neighborhoods that we're in, but also a community of alumni that support the college. One-third of all chiropractors in practice today in the U.S. are Palmer graduates, and it's hard to find another institution that's had such an influence on a profession as Palmer has on chiropractic. To give you some sense of the background of what we do, it often translates into financial impact into the community. And if I generally put together a few numbers, and I know that this is not as elaborate as many of the reports that you've seen before you on economic impact, but I think you'll be able to follow this and certainly apply these to more formal models if you choose to. We have 271 employees on the Davenport campus alone, a little over about 550 across the three campuses total. Our payroll at Davenport alone is almost $25 million. Our purchases is about $15 million per year. Our capital improvements average about $6 million per year over the five-year average that I pulled together for this presentation. We've spent more than that in the last few years, as you've seen, but on average about $6 million. So our spending is just shy of $46 million per year for the Davenport campus. Then, of course, we have students. We have nearly 1,000 students, and their non-tuition spend, because the tuition spend would be on the left column that I just went through with the college spend, but the non-tuition spend is about $21,000 per student that's estimated, which is a pretty elaborate estimate that we do for the government for student loans and other reasons. So that's the money they spend at Hy-Vee, at the mall, at the local grocery stores, whatever it might be. That total spend of nearly 21,000 times the 970 students we have is about another $20 million. In addition to that, as being the first chiropractic college, the largest chiropractic college, we have a lot of visitors. I picked one event that we have, which is our homecoming each year, which brings in about 600 to 700 folks visiting for that just one meeting in August, and we think just in meals, the per diem, and the hotel room alone, it's about .7 million. So obviously, this is a conservative estimate, but if you add up the student, the visitor spend, and the college spend, you end up with about $66 million of spend each year. Now, I am not an expert on impact, but as you read the reports, they apply different factors to this total amount of money based on how many times they think it changes hand before it leaves the community. In a conservative evaluation, they'll give a factor of about 2.5. I've seen some of the studies as high as 8 factor and some as low as 1.7. So we could pick the factor and apply it to the numbers, but if I use 2.5, that's a $1.66 million annual impact on the college. Now, I want you to keep in mind a couple of things. First of all, when you read these studies on financial impact, they'll often discuss the fact that if you go away, you can't assume that all the business also goes away. So if Palmer went away, perhaps St. Ambrose and Augustana would start chiropractic programs, and you wouldn't be losing much. In the case of chiropractic, it's so specific that I doubt that would happen. But in some colleges, as they go away, those students may stay in the community, so it becomes more elaborate trying to determine the impact on those factors. But I would remind you that very few of our students are from the Quad City area, so these are not students that go to Pleasant Valley and Benton Dorf and Rocky and come to Palmer. They are, but not very often. Most of our students are from outside of the Quad Cities. My point to you is, this is not money that would otherwise be here as it is for many of our undergraduate institutions. Our students come from all of the states and internationally to about 15% of our population. So it's money and students that otherwise wouldn't be here. And as we look at students and the money, those two things are highly correlated. Our enrollment is correlated to these numbers that I'm sharing. So obviously, you'd probably like to have a little bit of background on the enrollment. I started at Palmer College here in Davenport as a student in 1986. When I came here from Pennsylvania and started my coursework in 1986, there were 1,900 students on the Davenport campus. Life was good, we were happy, and we dominated the Hilltop. 10 years later, in 1996, we started another campus in San Jose, California, and some of our students decided to stay in California, Utah, Washington State, Arizona, those areas that pull to that area, and therefore, the Davenport enrollment diminished slightly. 10 years later, in 2006, we started a third campus in Florida. That campus immediately went to 500 students, and to some degree, those students were also students that would otherwise be on the Davenport or the West Campus, so we see Davenport going down a little bit. 30 years in total from when I started, that would be 2016, I have more recent data, but to keep it in 10-year intervals, we can see that the distribution of students has changed dramatically from those days 30 years ago. The Davenport campus currently has about 1,000 students, 970 specifically. The Florida campus is great gains, 800 students, and the West Campus is now coming back in the last few years to where we would like to see it. So in my meetings, as CEO of the campuses across all campuses, my responsibilities administratively extend across all three of those campuses, we have discussion of how to balance this market, how to increase the chiropractic market overall, and how to distribute these students evenly across our resource allocation. We have a big footprint at the top of this hill, and it's needed then to have a large student population, as opposed to letting the students go to Florida and building buildings there. So as we look at our footprint and what we would like to do, my board of trustees, my administration is charging us with increasing the Davenport enrollment. The main campus, the fountainhead institution for chiropractic, the birthright of chiropractic here, is something we want to celebrate and make sure that enrollment doesn't return the 1,900 students, but the enrollment increases. That starts with applications, and that starts with a lot of market research that we have with our students. So we spend a lot of time looking at what other students are looking at when they visit our Davenport campus. There are 15 programs in the U.S., but the dominant competitors for our Davenport campus are programs of chiropractic in Minneapolis, St. Louis, Kansas City, Chicago, and a really big program in Atlanta. These are our five competitors. I have lots of reams of market research on what students that walk on those campuses and those cities think of that experience and then come to our campus here. And we love the Quad Cities, and we win on so many marks. But there are other times that the students rate us slightly lower than the program that might be in Chesterfield, Missouri, or in Marietta, Atlanta, outside of Atlanta, and so forth. So we use that market research and internally with our board of trustees and our administrative team start to look at what we can do as a strategic focus to increase the awareness. We don't want every student in chiropractic to be enrolled in our campuses, but we want every student to apply to us. And if every student applies to us, we have to be the highest on every aspect of what they're measuring, which is student learning, student experience, campus image, recreation, parking circulation, and lifestyle and entertainment, all of these things. Even though as a student 30 years ago, I really didn't care about the seat or the speed of the Wi-Fi, which wasn't invented yet, trust me, our students care about that. They want to see the food they eat, they want to see who they're going to be friends with, they're checking how fast the Wi-Fi is to see if they can download Netflix or whatever else they're interested in doing. That's what the modern student is looking for, those amenities, that experience, in a much greater rate than when we went to institutions for higher education. So those strategic focuses have lead, have led to improvement strategies for the college. We didn't come about this on our own. We have been working with dozens of planners, of campus planners, city planners, we've been working with a lot of marketing individuals, some local ones, some distant ones, to get an idea from focus groups, from surveys, from other forms of information, what exactly do the students want to see, to enhance their learning, to enhance their experience, to continue to rate the Davenport campus as the fountainhead for the profession. This is the list generally, not necessarily in that order of priority, but the list generally of the things we need to do to the Davenport campus to compete with our branch campuses and to compete with those other programs that I mentioned, those five specifically that so regionally compete with the Davenport campus. Athletic Recreation Center, I can, I can cross that one off because we've got it done. We've spent $13 million on the north end of campus, and it looks beautiful, and it's amenity that students easily recognize. On the list, we still have campus edge and wayfinding. You remember, I was before you about three years ago or so, talking about Brady Street and what we wanted to do there. Those are the kinds of projects that came from the research that we've been looking at. Large auditorium is something that we need to celebrate, our alumni visiting, and other events that we have. Student clinic for the early portions of their learning and so forth and so on, I'm sure you can read the rest. The second to the last one is important to us. Palmer is the fountainhead campus. It is the birthright for chiropractic, and therefore, we own the archives of that. The foundational documents of our profession are showcased on our campus. We want to open those up in a greater way, not only to celebrate the Palmer family and their regional interest, not just in chiropractic, but broadcasting and all of the pioneer work that Palmer family did, but other aspects of what we hold, which are now kind of hidden away. We want to bring those out. That's an important one to many in our system. And student housing. So if I look at that list, the reason that I'm here is that I need help for at least three of those areas. We need help when it comes to zoning, planning, and improvement of demolition and construction to try to get some of those things done. Not all of them, some of them I can do within the four walls of my institution, and I don't necessarily need city approval outside of inspections and the routine things, not major zoning, as is before you now is the question. However, these ones in red, we do need help. We need help, which is something that caused us to reach out to your staff at the city and have a conversation about what we need to do. They introduced us to the whole concept of PID, which frankly, I had to look up a couple of times, I had no idea what that meant. The Planned Institutional District is an outstanding process. It's a process that takes things from an ad hoc approval basis and puts them in the same bucket. It's a process that formed, that forces organizations like Palmer College to plan 10 years out, not just day-to-day or year-by-year, with their conversations with the city. It's a good process, and your staff here at the city are outstanding at running this process. They're informative, they're kind, they're supportive, they're all the things that you'd want them to be. As we look at the highlights of that program, or that PID, which is quite elaborate, as you know, there are a couple of key things that we're trying to accomplish that need approval, and therefore, the PID. As you know from what you've read, Palmer's acreage is under the 40 minimum required for the PID, so the PID was not required by Palmer to complete. But we thought, in fairness, we're not going to cite an acre and a half and say that we're under that. You know, the spirit of the PID was to include folks like Palmer, so we, we did comply with the PID request. We have demolitions of vacant, Palmer-owned, no-one-in-them properties to build an athletic field and for some new housing. We have a request for several street closures. Those street closures are listed in the, in the program that follows this larger piece, but some of them, including East 11th and so forth. Alley closures, like the one that goes from our main portion of campus down to Vician Palmer Hall, that area behind the initial buildings of the Argyle and so forth, that's an area for closure. As part of the PID, we have had a series of neighborhood meetings, as well as a lot of other just impromptu meetings with neighborhood. We have broad neighborhood support for the PID process in those sessions and in these impromptu meetings that I've had. We've had no concern for disparate impact found by the city's consultant, misreported as my consultant, it was not Palmer's, city's consultant, and planning and zoning approval at that level happened just on the 20th of the same month. So where we're at now is that Palmer wants to continue our advancement of these facilities. We've accomplished on this north end what we wanted to do, and I also want to let you know that the changes that we did to the north end were really inspired by the changes that we saw at the Trinity Cathedral, Central High School, and Hilltop generally, extending clear-up to St. Ambrose. Those partners inspired us to do something about our north end, because we were the, we were the sore spot there. If you look around at what Central had accomplished and what Trinity had accomplished, we knew we had to do something here. And we also think that we can be an inspiration to others. As we extend our efforts across Brady Street and into that area that we have slated for an athletic field, we think that it will also inspire others in that area to have similar investments in their properties, to have similar investments in their institutions and organizations that really create the fabric of Davenport. So I appreciate your time. I want you to know that your process has been a good one for us. We followed the rules. We've been inspired by these changes. We think that our changes align perfectly to your planning documents, your 2025 document especially, and we look forward to your decision.
Thank you, sir. We will now open up to the public. If you would like to speak on this public hearing, please come to the lectern, state your name and either your address or your ward.
Hi, my name is Will Patton at 626 Perry Street, apartment number seven, that's ward First, I'd like to hand counsel a letter along with one copy of a petition where we have about 71 signatures of concerned citizens within the PID, as well as the surrounding Let me do that. You might have to share some of these. Okay. So one issue that we've found with the city's mosaic report is that it fails to separate the student population from the rest of the population, so it kind of gives a false read of who's there. The Bradford report that I've sent to every member of city, city council picks up on this and points out that within this area of the PID, these statistics don't really work because we have other evidence, including stuff that's supported within the mosaic report, as well as maps and statistics from other city-available places that show that poor people or people that have low-income, working-class people, people on Section 8, as well as people of color, in a broad sense, non-white people, all live in a higher concentration in this area, specifically the PID and a lot of other places south of Locust. And so any development is going to disparately impact a larger portion of these populations than elsewhere in the Quad Cities or in Davenport, sorry. So with the cover letter, we have some stats in there. The mosaic report also makes in its recommendations at the end of the report that they should be listening to the community, basically. We have that also in the letter that I've handed you. It says crafting conditions should be attached to zoning approval, community involvement process and decision-making. These aren't direct quotes, but if you've read the mosaic report, it's at the very Basically, the only thing I would like to suggest is that if Palmer demolishes anything for athletic fields, open green spaces, parking lots, that maybe they work with as the mosaic report suggests that they should, with local nonprofits, as well as working within the community, which is what my organization, the QCDSA, has been trying to do in order to make better solutions. And there's enough support for making amendments to Palmer's land use plan and, what is it, narrative of intent, I think was the terminology they'd used. I know you're not voting on this until Wednesday, if I understand that correctly. Right now, we have like 71 signatures. We're aiming for like 75 to 100 specifically within the PID, and we'd like to have a chance to present that to you by Tuesday evening before you vote and have everyone read it if possible. I'll be in touch.
Thank you, sir. If anyone would like to comment on this public hearing, please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward.
Hello, my name is Dennis Plaid. I live at 2029 East 38th Street Place here in Davenport, and I helped collect some of these signatures for the petitions. And I didn't meet everybody, a lot of the houses were already unoccupied, but I met quite a few people, and there's places that you don't think anybody could live there, and people are living there. And they have kids, and sometimes little children, and cats and dogs like everybody else. And these folks have really got their hands full, just making things work one week to the next. And some of these folks are going to find out apparently that they're going to get a 30-day eviction notice, and they have no idea that they're supposed to have a deposit ready for a new place. They have no idea where to even go to find a place that's affordable, is what they've got right now. And so I, I'm very concerned, not so much about the planning, I think the planning is excellent. I think you've got some of the best professionals anywhere working on these things, and I'm very confident in their ability to make this transition work. But I'm not so confident about the nuts and bolts, about who gets caught in the middle if this thing happens too quickly. And I think people need a fair notice of what's going on and why, and, and what they need to do to be prepared. And I don't know if it's possible for the city to help these people directly in some cases or not, but I think at least we owe them more than 30 days' notice, and I think at least we owe them a couple of choices if they can't find anything else affordable. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would wish to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern, state your name, address, or ward, please.
Hello. My name is Leslie Payton. I live at 1016 West Fifth, that's called Humilia Mary. I am homeless. Is it okay if I pick this up, son?
Sure.
I'm on a set income. I'm disabled. I'm blind. You know what I'm talking about? It's hard, but I, you wouldn't know if I ain't tell you. I'll share this with you. On $1,000 a month, it's tough. It's real hard, man. I mean, thank you. You guys are very fortunate for all the money that you have. I'm less fortunate, and I'm proud to be an American. And whoever's a veteran, thank you for representing our country. It makes me proud to be American. I'll share this with you. It ain't easy being on a set income. My buddy's homeless as well, and I asked him for $3 to help me to get on the bus tomorrow to go to a doctor's appointment. Being on a set income is hard. I lost my sight because I wailed, and I worked hard. I worked, I see, I don't make $700 a month, I at least get $1,065 because I did, I got work history. I worked hard. I built chemical carriers down at Mobile, Alabama, at the Atlantic Alabama Marine Shipyard. You know what I'm saying? And I lost my sight. I'm homeless. I ain't scared to tell nobody, and I ain't asking nobody to give me nothing. But affordable housing means a lot to me. It's nothing to people with money, because you can take up and save and go and pay a deposit. That deposit kills you, you know, especially if you got to pay $450 or $500 two times, that's $1,000, and you ain't got no more money. How am I to eat? Yeah, y'all give me food stamps. Yeah, y'all give me food stamps, you know what I'm saying? Thank you. But without those, I'll be starving, and I'm an American citizen, and I'm very proud to be an American. I'll tell you this, thank you, and I'm glad Palmer got that PSI with all that money. I wish they could let me have about fifty dollars. I don't want much. If I sound stupid, those are not my intentions. God knows I am an American citizen, and my ancestors, they worked hard for this country. Why should I be deprived of the equal rights that Dr. Martin Luther King strided so hard for equal housing? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern, state your name, address or ward, please.
Hi, my name is Olivia Williams, and I'm in the fifth ward in Davenport. I'm an affordable housing scholar and professor at Augustana. And looking at this, I have some concerns. And reading over the mosaic report shows that seventy-five units that are currently not owned by Palmer are expected to be demolished, many of which are rented between four hundred dollars and six fifty a month. So they're currently affordable for low-income families that will be replaced by student housing that won't meet the needs of the current population there. But there's no plan for Palmer to contribute to affordable housing, to replace those units or to even contribute funding to affordable housing outside of the PID. And as Palmer buys more property, it goes into private, it goes from private taxable status to nonprofit status. So we're actually losing some tax money there that could go to some affordable housing. So Davenport has an affordable housing crisis on its hands more broadly as well. In a report, according to the Institute for Community Alliances, September twenty seventeen report, there are only four hundred and twenty-three units in Davenport that are five hundred dollars or less, and we have a need for over seven thousand units at that price in order for them to be affordable. So broadly, there's a problem here, and this isn't just a Palmer issue, but this contributes to the issue, this type of thing over and over when Genesis or St. Ambrose or Sacred Heart Cathedral or Palmer buy up properties and develop them and take out affordable units, then what happens after that? So even the mosaic report says that conditions could be attached to this zoning approval that would mitigate or eliminate the potential displacement that would involve a longer-term, more substantial community involvement process beyond this type of hearing, but involving more low-income residents and renters rather than just landowners also in this process. And it also suggests generating partnerships between Palmer, the city, and nonprofits. I would suggest nonprofits like Humilia Mary Housing or other housing organizations on the Quad Cities Housing Cluster or other nonprofits that might have a say in what could happen here. The mosaic report, this is all at the very end, even recommends relocating some of the things in the plan in order to allow for some of that housing to stay or some of the historic units to be kind of redeveloped but kept affordable in the neighborhood. So these are types of things that could happen with this plan right now, and by not doing them, we push the issue further into the future. So I encourage you to think about how the city is going to replace these seventy-five units that might be removed, and should that be part of this plan? Should that be something you think really hard about going forward in creating a revitalization plan? I would suggest things like overlay districts to kind of account for these things in the future. When a big developer or landowner comes in and tries to buy a lot of properties, that way the city would have a say in what gets developed because it's important to preserve the historic working-class heritage of a neighborhood like this. And we also need a structure for incorporating these community developers in funding affordable housing going forward to kind of get ahead of this process in general. But as we keep just allowing plans to happen, we keep kicking the rock down the road rather than dealing with the issues now. So I think even though this isn't just a Palmer issue, they can't be grandfathered in just because other folks have gotten to develop without contributing to affordable housing. So thank you for listening.
Thank you for your input. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this public hearing? Please step forward.
Oh, my name is Scott Tonacliff. I'm the director of the Hilltop Campus Village. It's a local not-for-profit organization that includes the Palmer area and the PID that's being proposed. I rise in support of the PID because it constitutes meaningful reinvestment by a company, an institution that's been there for hundreds of years and has had a major economic impact on the area. Reinvestment, creative reuse of existing properties goes hand in hand with historic preservation, and I would commend the city and its council for recognizing as a priority the need for widespread urban core reinvestment. We've seen it with the proposals that are coming forward, and the key, it seems to me, has been that it is a broad, big problem requiring big solutions over a large geographic area, and I do not feel it's in the interest of the city or Palmer or the residents to single out one of the key institutions that does provide some jobs, some investment for the area. Having Palmer able to go forward with something like this will be an absolute cornerstone and a catalyst to attracting additional reinvestment. And the city's priorities to be able to try and find places and make provisions for safe, affordable housing is going to be much easier to be implemented if you have those programs that can develop safe, strong neighborhoods. It is the absolute key to our urban core north of the downtown and south of suburbia, and this is one of the best ways to be able to facilitate solving of those problems. So thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern, state your name, ward or address.
My name is John Dutey. I live at eleven-ten East High Street, and Rita Rossin is my Ward Five council member, Ward member, Alderman. I would echo everything that Scott just said. We really are lucky to have Palmer here, and we should make ways for Palmer to continue to be here. It doesn't have to be a winner-loser situation, though. It can be a win-win-win for all of us. And the affordable housing question really is a significant question throughout the city of Davenport and the Quad Cities and the nation, really. And so the city of Davenport has an opportunity to really anchor a solid affordable housing plan around some really strong institutions like Genesis, St. Ambrose, Palmer, that are making lots of investments in our city. And how can the city help leverage their goodwill with the goodwill that I know all of you have to make ways for affordable housing in our city? Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment? Seeing no one, I move to close this public. Please step forward, state your name and either address or ward, please.
Hi, I'm Cassandra Irwin. I am twenty twenty-six Forest Road, and I'm in Rich's district. So I would like to express a concern first for the minority community that will be impacted. This is predominantly a working-class area, and minorities will be affected. I don't live in this ward. I live, Rich and I live in a nice neighborhood that isn't impacted by this. We don't have to worry about this, and it still reflects poorly on the city when we're treating our lower-income neighborhoods like this. I think that Palmer has stated their annual budget very clearly, and I think that they could afford to do this the proper way with consideration for the citizens. I also would like to express some concern for the construction jobs that are implied with this. Will they be local? Will they be union? And will they be good-paying jobs that actually benefit the community? So I would like to basically speak against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment? Seeing no one, I move to close this public hearing.
It's been moved and seconded to close this public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. That public hearing is closed. Our second public hearing is for Public Works. Alderman Ambrose will lead that discussion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open a public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Jungie Park Bike Path Reconstruction Project. Estimated cost, one hundred thousand dollars. Anybody from the public wanting to address this, please come forward. Hearing and seeing no one, Your Honor, I move to close this public hearing.
It has been moved and seconded to close that public hearing. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. That public hearing is closed.
The second public hearing is on the plans, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the East Locust Street Pavement Improvement Project. Estimated cost, one million, two hundred ninety thousand dollars. Anybody from the public, please come forward. Hearing and seeing no one, Your Honor, I move to close this public hearing.
It has been moved and seconded to close that public hearing. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Our next area is finance, and Alderman Tompkins will lead that discussion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the first public hearing on the fiscal year 2019 operating budget, fiscal year 2019 capital improvement budget, and the fiscal year 2019 through fiscal year 2024 capital improvement plan. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item, please?
Yes, I'm Joe Taylor, CEO of the Quad Cities Convention Visitors Bureau, and the recommended budget includes three hundred and seventy-five dollars for the Quad Cities Convention Visitors Bureau, for which we thank you. That matches last year's investment, so that's a significant step in supporting the Quad Cities Convention Visitors Bureau as you do. So I simply want to say thank you for that investment in our efforts and our work, and appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing no one, I wish to close this public hearing.
It has been moved and seconded to close that public hearing. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. That public hearing is closed.
Move to the second public hearing. I opened this public hearing to convey the city-owned parcel W-0425-01 adjacent to the east of twenty-three oh five West Sixty-seventh Street, owned by the Dirksens. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item?
Good evening. My name's Ron Dirksen. I live at twenty-three oh five West Sixty-seventh. I've lived there for thirty-eight years. I own the only privately-owned property that touches this little piece that is on the floor today. I attempted to purchase this from the city of Davenport twenty-six, thirty-six years ago, but to no avail. I have maintained it since I owned twenty-three oh five West Sixty-seventh. I have mowed the lawn. I've removed the snow, and I've picked up the garbage that people have thrown out or have bloat in from Illinois. I want to thank the city of Davenport and the council for your consideration on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing no one, I move to close this public hearing.
It has been moved and seconded to close that public hearing. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. One more.
Last one. I open this public hearing regarding the conveyance of a vacant lot, parcel G-0034-25, formerly ten twelve West Ninth Street, located in Mitchell's Bluff Edition. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Hearing and seeing no one, I move to close this public hearing.
It has been moved and seconded to close that public hearing. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you, Alderman Tompkins. There is one appointment for this evening, for tonight's meeting, and that's for the Riverfront Improvement Commission. Brianna Perrett is a new appointee from Alderman-Dickman, and I would entertain a motion to move and second that appointment. It has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to petitions and communication from the council and myself. Are there any? First, we're going to start with Alderman-Dickman as our community engagement chair.
Thank you, Your Honor. I didn't get to give a debrief on the Skilled Trades Day last week as I was not feeling too great, but I wanted to thank everyone who was involved with that. We had about a dozen different organizations that came and talked to the kids as they came through for some activities that were going on at Beyond the Baseline that day, and it was really exciting to see kids trying out some careers, some activities in those careers that they might not have considered before. So definitely learned some exciting things and hoping to move forward on projects like that. Also, wanted to let everyone know that we are working on hosting some field trips for various after-school programs, and our first guests are going to be the Boys and Girls Club. So hopefully, they will have some fun when they come and visit us in a couple weeks and get to see all the great things that we do down here at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. Alderman Manson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I know there's been a lot of talk about all the things coming to the Quad Cities and my colleagues talking about all the wonderful things that go on here, but just something that went on this last weekend, then we'll go on Thursday, and we'll go on this weekend, the show choirs from our schools. If you haven't seen them and you haven't been visiting and watching these amazing kids sing and dance, for example, just this weekend, Davenport Central and Davenport West combined and hosted the Great River Show Choir Invitational. Thirty different show choirs, thirty different groups from six different states. Examples for people that won awards, Iowa City, Broken Arrow, Oklahoma, Jamesville, Wisconsin, Torrentino Grace from Minnesota, Glenwood, Illinois, Lynnmore, et cetera, all came to Davenport. All were downtown, and all were doing wonderful things. And then Thursday, the six show choirs from the Davenport schools will again be at the Adler, doing their wonderful music and singing and all the wonderful things they do. And then this weekend, they'll be back, Central by themselves, at Western Dubuque doing this. So downtown Davenport has an amazing group of kids singing, dancing, and show choirs, and we talk about bringing stuff and all the people from out of town into this community. Just thirty different show choirs. And if you haven't seen a show choir, there's, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty kids involved in the singing and then all the people that support it in the stage groups. So just think about all those parents and friends that came. And then we had an oratorical contest, and Nia Walker from Central placed third and became the first runner-up to the national tournament. And then Dominique Poole placed second in the Lincoln Douglas Debate, making her a qualifier for the National Speech Association's tournament in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. So just so you know what's going on, I mean, we talk a lot about what's going on with kids and especially lately, but what's going on here in Davenport and what's going on downtown and with all the kids singing and dancing and debating and such, this is a wonderful place for kids to and for people to go and listen, and we should tout this more because the amount of things that are going on here is awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Manson. Alderman Grip.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to touch on the Davenport goal, multimodal transportation. We had the public presentation on Monday night, Monday night. There was probably about fifty people there. It was a very, very well-done plan by RDG and Alta. Zach Peterson is the project manager for the city. He's done a fantastic job. Alderman Kuhl was there, as well as former Alderman Gordon, and we got to get a sneak peek at that multimodal transportation plan that's going to be coming to the city council here in a few weeks at a Tuesday briefing. And I just want to say it's important, it's well-done, and I hope And I just want to say, it's important, it's well-done, and I hope that once we see it, we can get behind it and start to make sure that no matter if you're using a car, your feet, a bicycle, or the bus, that you can get where you need to go in the city of Davenport. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Alderman Rosson.
Thank you. I just wanted to notate to everyone, if you haven't heard yet, that Davenport Sister Cities will be having a delegation arriving here from Carlisle, Ireland, so that'll be really exciting. They will be featured in the St. Patty's Day Parade going through downtown, so if you're out and you see me or somebody else with a group of people, please stop and say hi. They are visiting us. Some of their council members and community members will be coming along. So we were there last summer. I went along with the group and had a really wonderful time meeting all of their elected officials and learning about how they operate their government and how they spend their money. So they're returning it the favor and coming here to spend some time with us. So the Carlisle delegation will be here on Wednesday, the 14th, here at city council to experience our process, and I think we're going to be having a presentation, and they will also be out and about in the community. So if you see them, be sure to say hi. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Rosson. Alderman Kuhl.
Yes, Alderman Manson, talked about our older kids here in Davenport. I just wanted to mention our younger kids, not to leave them out. I attended an international day at McKinley Elementary here this week, and I know that the mayor was there as well earlier, and, you know, I was born in Iowa, and it's interesting to look at the changes that have occurred. We talked, I don't know how many international students that we have at Palmer, but we've become an international state. It's not just, it's not like what it was when I was a child. It's changed, and it's just wonderful to see the kids, young children, celebrating our diversity, growing up in a world that is so much different than our own, and appreciating it at the same time.
Thank you, Alderman Kuhl. I just wanted to mention again, I had on my list to mention very briefly as well, that was really fascinating in the sense that not only did they have displays from other countries, they had people representing those countries who were participants in a school, parents and families who made traditional dishes, wore traditional clothes, and it is something that I've told them, we need to do a better job of getting more media attention at that because it literally looked like a UN session. It was really great, speaking different languages and different foods and so forth. A couple other quick items. One of the things we do as Aldermen, the different Aldermen, are, serve as liaisons to various groups. I just want to note that, for instance, Alderman Rosson is going to be the liaison to the Civil Rights Commission, and will bring up the speed with all the other Aldermen that are going to be involved representing different groups throughout the city. It's not just what you see here, but it's the additional work we do at commissions, committees, boards, and community events as well. So thank you, Alderman Rosson, for doing that. March 1st, I just want to note that is the Mayor's Youth Job Fair. We've got close to thirty exhibitors, and it's an opportunity for kids 14, 18 to go, actually fill out applications, meet job, get summer jobs and so forth. It's going to be at the J.B. Young Opportunity Center at, basically Harrison and Locust there. February 22nd, that's tomorrow, is the Stormwater Conference. We want to talk to Amy Kay, who's our staff person relating to water-related issues. She's done a great job representing us, but again, clean water and water is very important to us, and there's a regional convention going on there tomorrow, and I, and I know Alderman, I mean, and Mayor Toomes will be there as well. Next Monday and Tuesday, Brandon Wright, our Assistant City Administrator, as well as our City Administrator, with Alderman McGinnis and Alderman Tompkins, and I will be in Chicago, looking at our bond ratings, talking to Standard and Poor's and Moody's because of the importance of how, we're excited to tell the story of the great news that are going on, and obviously, the better our bond ratings, the more we can do with the funds that we have available to us. And lastly, just wanted to mention, I will be going back to follow up on the items in Washington, DC on March 6th, 7th, and 8th, and I just want to assure everybody when you see that happening, that all the expenses for my travels are paid for by the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative. That's not taxpayer expense, but it gives us a lot of benefit as I get to represent us at that forum to bring, hopefully, resources back here and new investment to our community. So with that, again, I thank you all, Aldermen, for all the work that you are doing. We're now moving on to action items for discussion. I just want to clarify, the first part was the public hearing where we listened. This is now setting an agenda, talking about items, giving an opportunity for all of us to discuss certain things. All the items you saw on the agenda will come up again here, an opportunity for someone who wants to discuss that. This time, it's a five-minute discussion item, a smaller time period, but the Aldermen will participate. Based on that, an agenda will be set for next week. So we will go through and set an agenda. Some of them may be held over for more discussion next week, but that's process, that's called a cycle. Committee the whole tonight, council meeting next week, and it takes three cycles to get any, all this stuff approved. Occasionally, we expedite those items, but for the most part, it takes a committee the whole and a council meeting, three times, so there's plenty of opportunity for the community to participate in these discussions. So with that, I'm going to turn over our first area for discussion tonight. For action items will be Alderman Grip will lead that discussion, and Alderman Kuhl will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have eight items on the community development agenda this evening. I will start with first consideration and ordinance for case REZ-17-08, being the request of Palmer College of Chiropractic to rezon 37.63 acres, more or less a property generally located between Harrison Street and Pershing Avenue, and between East 12th and 5th Streets from R4 Moderate Density Dwelling District, R6M High Density Dwelling District, C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, C2 General Commercial District, C4 Central Business District, and M1 Light Industrial District to PID Planned Industrial District. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern, state your name. Seeing nobody, we'll open it up for council discussion. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I want to thank everybody that's here tonight, but, you know, I want to thank Palmer for their commitment to our great, great city, and being the fountainhead of chiropractics, it's, it's really remarkable, from G.D. Palmer to B.J. Palmer and his beautiful wife, Mabel. You know, we're, we are internationally recognized because we are the fountainhead of chiropractic sand. They've been great neighbors, and this project, we have a great process called the PID, and our staff does a wonderful job. You know, I want to see Palmer thrive, but I also want to reassure the neighbors that, you know, we're a Canadian city, we'll address the neighbors' concerns, and, you know, we have plenty of great neighborhoods in our community that if Palmer moves forward, you know, we're going to find good neighborhoods for anybody, and we're going to work with Palmer and the other agencies to address any concerns that might come up as this project moves forward. And again, I want to thank Palmer, and I want to reassure the neighbors. Thanks.
Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Yes, I want to thank Palmer also for its investment, continued participation in the city. It, you know, you're a longtime partner with the city, you're part of the city, you've been on that hill since 1896, 1895, 1896. I do have some questions, and really, and some concerns, and these are for, it's actually for the city, it's for Palmer, and it's for the community as well. So I've got several things, and if you, you know, it's going to take me a little while, but I'm just, and I apologize for it taking a while, but I'm going to do this thoughtfully. I also had questions, the mosaic study that was done, and several people who have spoken have asked about the recommendations, and those are, and I really, very briefly go off of those, go through these. The person who, the man, the company writing the study did make three recommendations. One was incorporating conflicting points of view into planning decision-making process, and this was, spoke to the city, bringing to the table diverse interests and concerns of current residents, et cetera, suggesting a more, a different and more substantive than the community and stakeholder meetings required by our PID process. Palmer very carefully followed the PID process that we have, but this is asking, for instance, the letters go out to owners, they do not go out to residents. So, and our process says that the letters are to go to owners, and that's what we did. And that is, again, correct and legal, and everything was done as it should have, as it should have been by our current process. But the question I'm asking is, has any of this been done? We've had this study since December. Has any of, have any of the recommendations been taken forward by any of the parties involved, the community, Palmer, or the city? The second thing is considering alternative siting of features and uses within the PID. They're talking about relocating or the field, they're talking about retaining, redeveloping for adaptive use, retention of some rental housing units. I think I saw recommended or suggested somewhere even moving some of the structures that are there now elsewhere, out of the, so it'd be out of the PID, but they would still be retained in some way. I know that's a complicated matter, and that's not here, but it's something I'm asking. And then exploring partnerships between Palmer and neighborhood not-for-profits, a way that perhaps Palmer, the city, and neighborhood partners can work together to look at the area around Palmer and in making it a better place for people to live, a more stable neighborhood, but also one where there is affordable housing. So I guess I would ask, there are people from the community here, there are people from Palmer here, there are people from the city here. Have any of these things been addressed? We've had this since December.
Who are you asking, Alderman McGinnis?
I would ask anyone from city staff, from Palmer, or anybody who's spoken from the community, if there's been meetings, if there's been consideration of alternating sightings or exploration of partnerships. These were the recommendations out of the study.
Is there, is there someone from staff who would like to answer this question now, or is this something that you'd like to get back to us for next week? Next week?
Okay, and that would be fine as well.
No.
Sorry.
I, I don't, we're not going to ask questions to the audience and then back and forth that way.
Just a point of order. The person that has the floor has the floor.
Is there someone from, I'll take it, is there someone from the community that would like to speak to this, or from Palmer? I'm asking.
Point of order.
It's the chair's prerogative. If the council would want to overrule the chair, they could, they could do so.
We have had ongoing conversations about the Mosaic's recommendations, and recommendations that may not be formally embedded in that consultant's report, but certainly crop from a similar discussion. And, and I know that Ryan Rusneck and myself and others have had those conversations. Specifically, to your point, we have looked at areas to relocate the field, as well as other amenities that may be causing problems for folks. We also have tried to always honor strong communications with our neighbors and also formalize those. I think when Mosaic recommended, or made those recommendations, I'm not sure they were totally familiar with the PID's extensive involvement with those earlier sessions that we had, the mandated sessions, as well as the voluntary sessions that we had at Hilltop and really with anybody that would have us in our PowerPoint to, in our little roadshow. So we, we feel like that has been addressed, but I think also the spirit of Mosaic is that there's something moving forward, and, and the city has asked us to have ongoing, at least annual, if not more frequently, conversations, not only while the plans are developing, but once in place, and we wholeheartedly endorse that. I would also say that on many issues that I face at Palmer as CEO, again, over the branch campuses, I'm not necessarily familiar with a lot of those issues because I don't personally live them, so I depend heavily on the information of my team. But in the case of many of these issues, I, I feel like I also am pretty familiar with it. I lived in the area on Perry Street for about six years, and on 12th Street for another three or four, and on 14th Street for several more. I've been in this area for about 20 years, just close to the college, walking to work and from work every day. I know the neighbors, many of those neighbors are still there, some of those neighbors I've had as patients, some of those neighbors' children went to Palmer as well. So I feel that I am familiar with those folks. As recently as, as this week, I did another walkabout through the area that we're talking about, ran into a few neighbors, and, and had a conversation with them about this entire process and what they felt, and, and making sure that the endorsement that we had in the community sessions did not involve a lot of timidity, that they felt that they could talk with us. So we'll continue that process informally and formally to get strong communication and to continue to look at flexibility we might have in our plans to meet the same objective. And if Ryan were here, he would tell you that some of that is stipulated in the, in the current PID.
Ryan is here.
Oh, there he is. He's behind the post for me.
Right. Okay, thank you. Okay, I had a, thank you, and, and again, okay, my next question was, I know, understand also that Palmer, that Palmer is continuing to make purchases outside the PID, and I was curious as to the reasons for that. There's some purchases at Pershing and 7th, and it's, it's not in the PID, so I guess I would be curious as to Palmer's plans for those properties. There's some at the corner, and again, if this, tonight is not a good night.
Excuse me a minute, I just want to intervene just for a second. I want to refer, as a, as a private entity, does that, is that a realistic question to ask at this point?
I think it's related to the Pids, the Pids zoning classification and the whole idea behind that, is to give a 10-year look at what the campus design is, so I think the question is if they're buying properties outside of the current, current boundaries.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman McGinnis.
I can clarify that we don't have an approved PID, so, you know, it's, it's hard to hold me to the standard of, of a PID that is yet to be approved. So should the PID be approved, then obviously, we would, we would scope our, our, our content back to it. But right now, you know, it's hard for us to behave as though we've had an approved PID.
Right, okay, right. I have one other question, and there was some reference, I'm going to go back to the P&amp;Z meeting, there was some reference to, and this, this gets, this goes to really the demolition of properties that were, was approved by the HPC, conditionally approved. There were 12, 13 actually, and one has been removed, but there were 12, and my question here is that, you know, we were in, that is, that is a historic district, it is the Cork Hill Historic District that the Palmer campus is part of, and my, my question and concern, and this was a staff comment, it was a concern about the remaining properties that are either owned by Palmer or within the PID area, that have, in the ordinance, have no protection nor guarantee. And so I am concerned with the number of properties, the 12 properties, some of which are in the Cork Hill District, and some of which are independent, or individually listed properties, if there might be a consideration, and again, I'm not asking for an answer tonight, but it's a question that I have, if there might be a consideration for including those within the ordinance as somehow being protected going forward. Not asking for a question, or not asking to, to put anybody on the spot tonight. This is my first occasion to be able to speak to this, so that's why I'm asking that. So, I, I'm not asking for an answer to that, but I would, you know, perhaps next week, like to, to, to discuss that, or be asking about discussing that further. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Manson.
Thank you. Thank you, Palmer, for investing in our city, continuing to and build. I, for 15 years, have watched firsthand what you've done, because I'm a teacher at Central, and I stand on Main Street many days, and I purposely watched your education and athletic facility grow, so thank you for that. I, I thank you also for how you, how you treat veterans, and your work in your clinics, that you ensure that they don't have any out-of-pocket expenses, and, and take all. I've talked to your folks many times, and that's, that's a great service you provide, and a lot of people don't know that. Having said that, and I don't have, I'm not looking for answers from you or for the staff today, but just for, for future, hopefully by Wednesday, how many people are we talking about that may be displaced? about that may be displaced or moved when we do this? And if, if we, if we are moving folks, or displacing, or having them move, what are we doing to work to help them find affordable housing? And if we have a plan for that, I, I look forward to, to understanding that. But I'd, I'd love to have the discussion, love to have us work together to help find the folks that might be impacted on this, and then sometimes, and someone might have mentioned it, you know, the landlords or such, might know of this, but the residents might not. So a, a good conversation, working with them to help them find, because I understand from research that our staff has done, that there is some affordable housing, and, and there's some affordable housing in the area we're talking about. So if we can help them find a nice place, or find a comparable place, or without just saying, you have to go, I think that would go a long way in the relationship building and, and working with the neighborhood. Because you do a good job, but this seems to be something that's a little bit of a concern. Certainly is a concern of mine, so working with the folks that might be impacted by this, and helping them, whether it's us in the city, and you guys, and us working together, and I'd be happy to participate in that. And then just a request, as it was mentioned by a young lady already, we have wonderful contractors in our city, wonderful folks that do great work, and I'd ask that you please consider using them when you do build-outs and do work here at Palmer. Thank you.
Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity, for Alderman McGinnis, you know, Alderman Mattson and I, probably the only two Aldermen have been involved with the PID process, with St. Ambrose, and I know, we had many, many neighborhood meetings to help the neighbors understand the process, our staff was always there, and, you know, it took a while, but I think we found a very good compromise after it was all over. So if Alderman McGinnis would like to host some neighborhood meetings, listen to the neighbors, try to address their concerns, I'd be more than happy to assist you with that, and maybe Alderman Mattson will too.
Alderwoman Rossen.
Thank you. This is kind of a, a large topic for me, so I'm going to try to keep my comments brief. I just wanted to make one notation, because I've read the disparate impact study. There was just a notation of 75 residential units would be taken down, just for clarification, 33 of those housed Palmer students. So when we're looking at data, I'd really like to look at the actual data of what we're talking about, actually back to Alderman Mattson's point of, you know, what are the specific numbers of people that would be displaced, instead of kind of lumping data together. So it's 42 units, if you subtract the 33 that Palmer owns, that Palmer students live in, that will be taken down. It's 42 units that are left, that are actually owned and operated by other private landlords in five different properties within the PID, so just some clarification there on that. So I have a little bit of a different take on this, perhaps, than, or an additional take that hasn't been mentioned yet. So I actually live south of Locust, at 13th and Arlington Avenue, I don't live that far, far from the Palmer campus, and I just, I do want to note, on a quick side note, that our neighborhoods are nice, as well as other neighborhoods around the city, okay? So I just want to notate that. I live south of Locust, I live in these neighborhoods, and I have great neighbors. There are a, a, there is an inordinate amount of union workers that live south of Locust in my neighborhood and around Palmer. It is not all low-income, it is not all distressed housing. So we, we actually have strong neighborhoods, we have the Cork Hill District, we have 14th, 14th Street Historic District, I mean, we have a lot of historic properties south of Locust and east of Brady. So in my mind, the Palmer piece, let me just say, I think Palmer's plan is, is wonderful. I think it's good that there's going to be investment in our community, in an area that many people would not think at first to invest in. So keep that in mind, because if you think about the neighborhood south of Locust, why are they more blighted than other areas of the city? Why do they have more low-income housing than other areas of the city? Why is there that concentration there? If you take, thank you, if you take, I'll get there, if you take the decades of housing discrimination, and just the flat-out ignoring of the neighborhoods of south of Locust, you get what we have today. So that kind of reinvestment that Palmer wants to do, that's wonderful, because that will spur additional investment in the neighborhood, and that's what we want, that's what I want, and I, that's what I want all of you to want, because we have an opportunity now to do something wonderful in our neighborhoods, in our urban core, that really has not been done since the city, well, when the city started, it wasn't the urban core, but now it is. But now we have an opportunity to make this an exciting visionary project into the future. And in my mind, the Palmer piece, their campus, what they want to do, that's wonderful. But the separate issue for me is addressing housing and the blight that does exist south of Locust, that runs all the way across the city. So the things that Palmer has done, in as far as buying houses, tearing them down, they're not unique in that aspect, that's private property rights. Anybody sitting in this room can go out and buy 50 houses tomorrow, if you would like to do that, and then you can petition to have them demoed, if you would like to do that, and you could put up condos. So there's some laws that are in place that allow for personal property rights, for what you can do with the property that you own, and the fact that Palmer wants to invest in the neighborhood that is considered low-income and blighted, that's a wonderful thing. So on a related topic, for me, it's a long-term game plan, it's not about a short-term fix. So long-term, I want to say it again, urban revitalization, because that's where we're going to have a plan, put a plan into place, to have neighborhoods where we have an idea of what can and cannot go there. For example, I said this to a resident who happens to be in the audience this morning, we spoke, that 53rd and Elmore got to have a study done, and now we have overlay districts for 53rd and Elmore. Great. And the overlay districts kind of give the city an idea of what's going to be developed there, you know, what kind of parameters we put around that, those developments. And I want that same level of attention and importance paid to the neighborhood south of Locust, because I live there, I know we are just as valuable, and just as important to the overall fabric of the city of Davenport as 53rd and Elmore is. So as we embark upon this revitalization plan, that's the meat of it, that's where I really want to see all of you come to meetings and provide your input, because that's where we're going to start having our overlay districts south of Locust. How do we want our neighborhoods to look? Where do we have, to Marion's point, where do we have historic districts that have been ignored for decades? Do you realize that City of Davenport has the most historic, registered historic districts, more than any other city in the state of Iowa? That should be in our Quad City and Convention Business Bureau, Joe's already gone. We should be promoting that, and a lot of those historic areas, guess where they're located?
South of Locust.
Thank you, south of Locust. So we have an even more compelling reason to invest in our older neighborhoods. And this conversation about housing, and, you know, how that's going to play out, and I've heard things about gentrification and whatnot, that's the point of us starting this planning process. So as a city and as a council, as we start to have these conversations, we'll be having public sessions where you will help, help us form that plan for this new vision of how we're going to take Davenport forward into the future. And a part of that plan is dealing with housing in the central city, low-income housing, affordable housing, middle-income housing, all of it. But for me, that's where the real housing question comes in, and, and as always, it's a public-private partnership that will have to happen, so our community partners, all of them, in my mind, we should, and will be asking them to participate in this process. Because as our neighborhoods improve, and we get more people back into the neighborhoods, like we did with downtown, because if you remember 15 years ago, you didn't go downtown after dark, but once we have that kind of development, places like the Palmer campus will benefit from that, Genesis will benefit from that, Ambrose will benefit from that, so they have every reason to support a level of a revitalization plan where they're throwing their weight, and potentially their funding, and I'm looking at you, into that, because that's what will need to happen. Because the city, there's never going to be a scenario where the city of Davenport is ever going to be able to afford to redo everything the way it's supposed to, it needs to be done. Can I just say that, streets, we all get it, there's not enough money. So it's going to have to be a public-private partnership. So in my mind, the call is, is truly for a long-term plan, to plan this out with prudence and carefulness and thought, being very inclusive of all of our communities, and having a plan that's exciting and visionary, and it's kind of like a new breath for the city of Davenport. So that's my take on it. So Palmer, great investment, I'm not really that worried about Palmer, and it's a great investment, and I anticipate you being a partner going forward in our urban revitalization plan, and I look forward to that. Thank you.
Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you for letting me have another go at this. I do want to also say, I mean, I, I want to tell everybody tonight who's, who's spoken, I do appreciate everything, I appreciate what Palmer's doing, and I appreciate the concerns of the community. I so much, this has been, I've been dealing with this for over a year in different roles in the city, and, and I so much would like to see this, as I, someone mentioned so well, about seeing a collaboration. This is not, Palmer has gone through every step it should go through in this process. It was a process that was asked to do, and it did it. I don't know if the process is perfect, and, and, but they, you know, they have soldiered through this process. There are questions that are left about, you know, about affordable housing, and it is a big question, it is a question across the country. I would love to see this, this process, rather than just saying, oh, we'll do something down the road, that the city, that our not-for-profit housing partners, and that Palmer, that we can all work together, not putting it all on, not putting it all on Palmer's shoulders, but that we all have a piece of this, as Alderman Rossen said. We really need to resolve this, and this is a great, great opportunity. There is, all around the proposed PID, the beautiful campus that Palmer is planning, there are issues with housing all around that campus. They're not going to go away when the PID is established, but I don't believe that continuing to lose more housing is a great idea either. I really think this is a wonderful chance for us all to engage in this together, and I would really hope that we could do that. And, and I, and you know, I live south of Locust too, and I say, so low, so cool, so, as we said with weed and seed, so I love where I live.
Alderwoman Dickman.
Thank you, I know we're quite long on conversation here, but there were a couple of things that Alderman Rossen mentioned that I wanted to make sure were noticed, they're little wonky terms, but the overlay district, I think, is really important, and I want to thank you so much for championing urban revitalization, you've really taken the lead on all the legwork for how we're going to do that, and, and making it a cause, I think, for the whole council. And then also mentioned that we are still working on the zoning overhaul, and community input is actually really valuable. I know zoning might not be the most exciting thing for a lot of people, but it's really important for how we, how we grow in our neighborhoods and doing that 20-year plan. And so I know we've got some newer activists in the room, so I'd really encourage, well, everyone, but especially those who are keen to learn how to get involved, to be part of the zoning overhaul process, so thank you.
Mayor Klipsch.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention very quickly, I also want to echo your comments related to, thank you Alderman Rossen for your leadership on this, and, and some of our discussions related to the fact that urban revitalization is creating an area, a destination neighborhood. And I think that's a different view, but I also want to ask, I know Bruce Berger and the staff, maybe next week you can bring us what we are doing in affordable housing in our community, because we are very committed to this, we're spending millions of dollars on affordable housing, but that's one issue. The second issue is, we want to create neighborhoods that are destination for all people, and I think that's extremely important, so thank you for your comments that you've made as well. And it's interesting, as, I knew this topic was obviously of interest to a lot of people, I've spoken to Dr. Marchiori, and a lot of other community stakeholders, some church pastors, some community leaders, some representatives from different areas in that neighborhood, and all of them are willing to come together to look at how we make this happen. So that's a very encouraging, it wasn't dividing up and saying, what are they going to do? It's a matter of us all coming together. So I work with my colleagues to facilitate those discussions, because I think that's where we want to be in the long run. It's not necessarily changing something, it's making something better than any of us could perceive, and including everybody. So thank you, Alderman Klipsch, for that opportunity.
Thank you, and when you, when you chair the, the discussion, typically you speak last, and then anything that you want to discuss, you check off as other people discuss it. So I don't have too much left, I do want to say, Palmer's been a big part of the city of Davenport for a long time, they're going to continue to be a great neighbor. This expansion, this PID is what they need to be competitive to stay here, to, to be a great neighbor, and I would just encourage, encourage you to, you, you've heard the, the people of Davenport, your neighbors, what they're looking for, and I know that you will be a good neighbor. And then the other thing I wanted to touch on, Mayor Klipsch just did, is that we are the leader of affordable housing in the Quad Cities, and we may not be doing everything, but we are doing something, it is a focus of ours, and I think as we look to urban revitalization in the central city, we need to look as far as our downtown, that has a lot of affordable housing, it has a lot of moderate income housing, and has some high-income housing. It's a great place to live for, for all people, and that's what we strive for. We were able to bring our downtown back from, from the dead, and I think we are going to be able to reinvigorate our central city neighborhoods in, in the same manner. So seeing no one else on the council, we are going to move along, we will keep that on the discussion agenda for next week, and we will move on to item number two, which is a resolution approving case number ANX-18-01, the annexation of 16.84 acres, more or less of territory located west of North Division Street and south of Sloper Town, Sloper Town Road. Sterilite Corporation is the petitioner. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the annexation of 155 acres, more or less of territory located west of Hillendale Road, south of Sloper Town Road. Meyer Keppi is the petitioner, case number ANX-18-02. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving the annexation of .24 acres, more or less of railroad property located south of Sloper Town Road. City of Davenport is the petitioner, case number ANX-18-04. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving case number F-17-18, being the final plat of Landon Prairie, being a replat of Lot 2, Victory Acres, located at 1366 West Kimberly Road, containing three residentially zoned lots on 1.37 acres, more or less. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? I do have one comment, we talked about it at the briefing yesterday, it's just that elbow connector road from Fillmore to 40, 40-something. Just curious about that, if there is a plan to connect that, it seems to be a connection that should be made within that neighborhood, so people can get to arterial roads, both to Sturtivant and Marquette.
Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Alderman Klipsch, if we're going to do that, I, please ask, before we make any, I talk to the neighbor, because I just talked to a bunch, and they're okay with this rezoning, or I'm sorry, this replat, but that would be a huge different discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. And one of my, one of my main questions is, is this going, is this part of the petition? So, or is there any plans in the future to bring that through? So we will keep that on discussion, and then look forward to getting an answer on that next week. Item number six is a resolution approving 2018 urban revitalization tax exemption projects. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution supporting a workforce housing tax credit application to the state of Iowa for a housing project located at 1606 Brady Street. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this? Anyone from the council? This is the Davenport Schools Administration Building, Newberry Living is looking to...
Newberry Living is looking to make that into multi-residential housing. Potentially, there are some, some tax credits and that area is key to revitalization and we're hoping that they get those. Alderwoman Dickman?
I just wanted to comment that Newberry Housing has done some work in my ward that I believe the police department called it transformational. So, I think this is something that it might be, it might seem like just another agenda item, but it's something we should all be really excited about.
Seeing no one else, that item will move on. And item number eight is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the Iowa Certified Local Government 2017 Annual Report. I'm just going to read the, the first paragraph on this, because I think it, the, the line that's in the, the agenda doesn't tell you exactly what, what that means. And this is, this is mostly just a paperwork thing, so we can apply for some grants and things. But the Iowa Certified Local Government 2017 Annual Report is submitted to the State Historic Preservation Office. The report is to ensure that the Historic Preservation Commission has achieved consistency with program requirements and to provide an update on historic research, resources, commission members and ordinance changes. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Alderman Clul, would you please set the agenda?
Thank you Alderman Gripp. I move that items number one and five be moved forward to discussion and items two, three, four, six, seven, and eight be moved forward to the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed, same sign? That concludes community development, Your Honor.
Thank you Alderman Gripp and Alderman Clul. Again, for the group, as you're watching, those items now that we just discussed, the items that said were moved on for consent would just be approved en masse next week. The items that came up with questions will be put on discussion and discussed in more detail and will continue that until we answer all the questions that everybody has. So, just to give you an idea of the process. Our second area to be discussed is public safety. Alderman Rawson as Chair will lead that discussion. Alderman Condon as Vice Chair will set the agenda.
All right, thank you. And we have a long one, because spring and summer is around the corner. Yay. Finally, so, public safety, open for the first item. Resolution closing various streets, lanes, and public grounds on listed dates to hold outdoor events. Item number one, Kill Kenny's Pub for St. Patrick's Day Celebration, March 17th, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and March 18th, 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. Actual event time, the actual event time is 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Closure location, Harrison Street from the alley south of Fourth Street to Third Street, the sidewalk, parking lane, that will be amended in the future, we did catch the typo, and one travel lane in Third Street from Harrison West along North Side from 300 to 312 West Third Street. Anyone from the public have a comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. The Office, St. Patrick's Day Celebration, March 17th, 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. March 18th, 12:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Closure location, the north two travel lanes and parking lane on Third Street between Brady and Main Streets. Anyone from the public want to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. The Bo Arts Fund Committee, Bo Arts Spring Fair, May 11th through 13th, 12:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Closure location, Second Street from Harrison to Brady and Main, and Main from Third Street to River Drive. Main Street remains open for access during the fair. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Gonzo's Cinco de Mayo Festival, May 5th, 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. Closure location, Marquette Street, right in front of 3923 North Marquette to North driveway of 3940 North Marquette Street. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Gonzo's Cinco de Mayo, 5K, May 5th, 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Closure locations, start to finish in front of 3923 Marquette Street, west on West 41st Street to Division Street, north on Division to West 53rd, east on West 53rd to Northwest Boulevard, south on Taylor Street to West 52nd Street, west on West 52nd and Garner Drive to West 51st Street, east on 51st Street to Fillmore Lane, south on Fillmore Lane to West 46th Street, east on West 46th Street to Marquette, and it just goes on and on, doesn't it? I mean, could this be any longer on Marquette to the finish line at Gonzo's Restaurant? Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this or have me reread it?
You should get a teacher's.
No. And I see one person from council, Alderman Mattson?
Thank you Alderman Chief. As usual, you guys do a great job with the neighbors and the entrances and exits when people are coming and going, so I'll just ask you to, you know, to continue your good work and make sure people that live in the area can get out, they're not landlocked in there for the whole time, just when there's gaps, as you usually do, especially watching as they run up on Division. And then for people that know, it's become a huge neighborhood area event and the cause is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman Mattson. The next item, I'm going to read this, but then I'm going to ask for a motion to delete and I'll explain why. So, the update to this was, River Action Ride the River, June 17th, 6:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Closure location, I wrote on my copy, bike path and street crossings at Fourth and Leclerc, Third and Leclerc and Second Street, and entrance to Government Bridge to Second Street to Harrison Street South to Leclerc Park. Now, they had a route change because of some other conflicting events that are happening within that area. They have asked to have this item deleted off the agenda for now and will bring it back when they kind of redetermine what their new route is going to be. So, I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion from somebody on council. A second?
To delete?
Yeah, to delete it for now, at their request. Do they can bring the event back? We've, I've already checked. I've already checked. So, those are, was there a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you Alderwoman McGinnis. So, there's a motion and a second, so this item will be removed from the agenda and brought back when they're ready to redo the event. Oh, I'm sorry.
We need a vote.
Do we need a vote? I forgot, I'm sorry. Okay, oh, just a voice vote's good enough? Okay, all in favor? Anyone opposed, same sign? All right, so that item is deleted. So, for sections, for the next section, there's a motion approving noise variance requests for various streets and events on listed dates. I'm going to read this in two big sections and then ask if there's any public comment and council with comment, just to speed this up a little bit. Starting with the first item, Kill Kenny Pub, 300 West Third Street, St. Patrick's Day Celebration, March 17th through 18th, 2018, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Outdoor music over 50 dB. The Office, 116 West Third Street, St. Patrick's Day Celebration, March 17th through 18th, 2018, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Outdoor music over 50 dB. Gonzo's, 3923 North Marquette, Cinco de Mayo Festival, May 5th, 2018, 6:00 a.m. to midnight, outdoor music over 50 dB. St. Ambrose University, 518 West Locust Street, final weekend in April, April 27th, 9:00 p.m. to midnight, April 28th, noon to 1:00 a.m. Outdoor music over 50 dB. So, I'll stop there. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on any of those items I just read? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, those will move on. The next section I will read in two groups. Motion approving beer and liquor license permits, new licenses, new owner, temporary permit, et cetera. First item, Scott's Shovelhead Shed, 220 North Pine Street, outdoor area, March 17th through 18th, 2018, St. Patrick's Day event, license type C. Sub Express and Gas, 4307 West Locust Street, new owner, license type E for liquor, B wine, and C for beer. Leisure Lanes, 2802 West 73rd Street, outdoor area, March 17th through 18th, 2018, for a St. Patrick's Day event, license type C for liquor. KSI, Center for Active Seniors, 225 West Second Street, Figgy Outdoor Plaza only, outdoor area, March 17th, 2018, St. Patrick's Day event, license type B for beer. Damview Inn, 410 East Second Street, outdoor area, March 15th through 18th, 2018, St. Patrick's Day event, license type C. Kelly's St. Patrick Day at Front Street, Front Street Brewery, 421 West River Drive, parking lot only, outdoor area, March 16th through 17th, 2018, St. Patrick's Day event, license type B. Kill Kenny's Pub and Eatery, 300 West Third Street, outdoor area, March 17th through 18th, 2018, St. Patrick's Day event, license type C. Max Tavern, 316 West Third Street, outdoor area, March 17th through 18th, 2018, St. Patrick's Day event, license type C. The Office, Local 563 Cocktail Lounge, 16 West Third Street, outdoor area, March 17th through 18th, St. Patrick's Day event, license type C. Shenanigans, 303 West Third Street, outdoor area, March 17th through 18th, St. Patrick's Day event, license type C. For all those I just read, for wards one through three, anyone have any comments or issues with any of those? Come on up, Adam.
The one for KSI? I appreciate a partnership with working with them and the good thing is, is we didn't have any issues last year and I will definitely make sure that continues.
Very good, thank you.
On my end, so, thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Anyone else from the public? Anyone from council for any of those items? Seeing and hearing no one else, all those will move on. Starting up again with, and by the way, if you haven't scheduled St. Patrick's Day in your calendar, there's your list of events to, to hit. Adam will be there. Meat Market, 1629 Washington Street, ownership update, license type C. W Mart, 1205 to 1207 East Locust Street, new owner, license type E, B, and C. Rhythm City Casino, 7077 Elmore Avenue, premise update to exclude liquor room and basement, license type B. Rhythm City Casino, 7077 Elmore Avenue for the basement, new license and basement liquor room, license type E. Weeblers Quad Cities Harley-Davidson, 5320 Corporate Park Drive, new license for storage during events, outdoor area events, Bike Night, April 28th, 2018, spring season opener, May 26th, 2018, bikes, blues, and barbecue. June 16th will be the Freedom Ride, July 21st, Seals Benefit Ride, August 11th, the Rally Bike Show, September 22nd, 28th Annual Open House, and October 27th, Freedom Fest, license type B. Assumption High School, 1020 West Central Park Avenue, outdoor area, April 20th to 21st, Havana Nights, license type C. And Panchero's Mexican Grill, 902 West Kimberly Road, Suite 21, new license, outdoor area, license type B. For those for Ward four through seven, anyone from the public have any comments they would like to come up and say at this time? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, those items will move on. The next section is annual license renewals. I don't read through those and I see they're printed tightly together, so perhaps you can't read through them either. And with that, I will ask Alderman Condon to set an agenda.
I move to place items one, two, and three on the consent agenda and noting that the River Actions Request has been deleted for now. And item B and the liquor renewal.
Sure.
One, two, three, and B.
You already got a second, so. He was quick. So, there's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign? That's it.
Thank you Alderman Rawson and Alderman Condon. Our third area to be discussed is Public Works. Alderman Ambrose will lead that discussion. Alderman Dunn will set the agenda.
All right. The first item of discussion is a resolution approving the proposed plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Jungy Park Bike Path Reconstruction Project. Estimated cost, $100,000. Anybody from the public? Council? The next item is a resolution approving a contract to replace two motor control centers and one switchgear line at the water pollution control plant to Tri-City Electric in the amount of $359,170. Anybody from the public? From the council? Number three is a resolution approving the contract for the Federal Street Sewer Improvement Project from Hawkeye Paving Corporation, the amount of $638,490, $489. Anybody from the public? Council? Number four is a resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the East Locust Street pavement improvement project. Estimated cost is $1,290,000. Anybody from the public? Do we have someone from staff? Public Works Director, can you tell us a little bit about this project and the time it will start and how long it will take?
This one was broken out from the, the normal project, because it had more underground work than some of the other ones in the resurfacing, so this will be going out to bid now and I believe work will be starting as soon as we have a successful bidder and then you'll be seeing the rest of the resurfacing projects coming through in the next cycle, I believe. And that will include, you had asked about the area of West Locust, um, between North and.
Yeah, we don't want West Locust ignored while the East Locust is being repaired. Can you tell us a little bit what our plans for West Locust this year?
That, that will just be a normal research, part of the normal resurfacing bid. There's not as much underground work in that area.
Okay.
Yep.
While you're up here.
Potholes?
Yeah, why don't you give us an update on the pothole battle?
So, I, yep, I sent a note to you all today. We do have extra crews out on it now. We are asking them to work 10-hour shifts. There are a couple of days this week where we're expecting rain again, so we're just going to have to work around the rain as much as we can. I mean, we have asked for volunteers and any of the teamsters that would like to work Saturday or Sunday to come on in as well, so we'll, we'll keep on that rotation until we're, what I would say, caught up and back to a normal level. This time of year is just, just usually busy.
Thanks Nicole.
Thanks, yep.
Number five is a resolution accepting the Kimberly Road Bridge over Deck Creek Replacement Project, completed by Helms Group of Freeport, Illinois. The project was completed with a final contract amount of $1,265,886. Anybody from the public? Council? I'm going to read the next four items together. Number six is a resolution assessing the cost of brush and debris removal at various lots and tracks of real estate. Number seven is a resolution addressing the cost of boarding up buildings at various lots and tracks of real estate. Number eight is a resolution assessing the cost of sewer inspection at various lots and tracks of real estate. And number nine is a resolution assessing the cost of repairing water service at various lots and tracks of real estate. Anybody from the public? Council? Number 10 is a motion accepting the agreement to reimburse Mid-America Energy Company to raise overhead electric wires to construct traffic signals at Veterans Memorial Parkway. Estimated cost is $55,000. Anybody from the public? Council? And number 11, the last item, is a motion approving the submittal of two applications to the state revolving fund sponsored project program. Each request is for $800,000 for watershed improvement projects. Anybody from the public? Council? Alderman Dunn, please set the agenda.
I make a motion to place all items on consent, please.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Oppose? Thanks.
Thank you Alderman Ambrose and Alderman Dunn. Our last area to be discussed is finance. Alderman Tompkins as the Chair will lead that discussion. Alderman McGinnis will set the agenda.
Thank you. I have seven, seven items on finance and I will try to move us along. Thanks for hanging in there. Item number one is a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2019 operating budget, fiscal year 2019 capital improvement budget, and the fiscal year 2019 through fiscal year 2024 capital improvement plan. And I was trying to be so efficient that I skipped over previously, so apologize, just trying to keep you on your toes. Anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item? Okay, Ms. Spiegel, please go ahead and do your presentation. Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, Corey Spiegel, your city administrator. Just a, a quick recap of really what we've been working on for the past several weeks related to the budget. It's really based on five pillars. One is maintaining our current tax levy so that it's a balanced budget. We were very fortunate this past year to have 5% growth in our community, so that budget reflects some of that growth. We continue to make investments in streets and sewers. You just had a lengthy public works agenda, continuing to focus on investing in those resources and making sure that we have stable systems for the future. We updated our financial policies last fall, so that we're in a great savings position as, as we head to Chicago next week, so this budget represents that as well, and a continued commitment to public safety. So, this budget accounts for the four new police officers, as well as the recommendation for the inclusion of a public safety analyst. As we all know, but maybe the public doesn't, we start the budget process very, very early. Staff, as we're closing up one year and living in another, we're planning for the next and beyond. So, our budget process with, with the council actually starts in August with core competencies. We're going through closing and, and different department requests before we actually start the process very publicly as part of the work sessions in January. So, this is a constantly evolving and we had a great discussion yesterday about how we can make the process even better in the future, but this is a constant process improvement of how we, we continue to evaluate our budget, how we provide services and, and make what we do better for our citizens. The budget before you for fiscal 19 is a $209 million budget, so a seven tenths of a percent increase over this current year's budget. A few of the fee adjustments that we've asked the council to consider, so the annual increase to residential sewer, the garbage fee, and then the clean water fee, how that relates when we talked about the. How that relates when we talked about the residential assessment rolling back a little bit. The net impact to the average household in Davenport's $4.50 this year. So fairly nominal for the growth we've received. We continue to have the commitment through the general fund to police and fire and you can see the proportion of the budget represented to that. We will continue those commitments in the future as well. So we talked a lot about the CIP, the Sustainable Infrastructure, over $115 million for streets and sewers in the sixth year CIP, $19 million next year, almost $19 million next year, and continuing to invest in our city assets. We own a lot of real estate, we have a lot of buildings, we house a lot of great, different services in our community and making sure we keep those buildings in great condition for our visitors and our employees is important as well. The CIP major category, streets and sewers, always big ones. The River Center, as we've talked about for many years to come, this is the year we make some of those systemic improvements to ensure that that asset lives a long life and some more improvements and enhancements at the airport, most of which is funded through federal grants. A few of the high-level CIP, we talked about with Matrix being here, our continued investment in fire apparatus that we need to plan ahead. Those are very large purchases of equipment. So we started that in fiscal 18 with the amendment. We have a truck in 19 and several trucks in the out years as well. Urban revitalization, we've talked extensively about that today, so this really is our planning year with a little bit of seed money and then the council will begin to evaluate that into the future as well. Main Street Landing, we've revisited how much has really happened in the past two years and so you'll start to see the next generation of that project come to life this summer under construction. And then the Duck Creek stabilization, we saw some great pictures of the cliffs and how we make that a safe and great experience for our citizens. So those are some of the high levels. As we talk to the whole CIP, we provide updates and those will be available on the website as well on some of our key projects throughout the summer as we get into the construction season. And the work plan that we presented, we really focus on the talent. One of our biggest investments as an organization is in our people and working together to do some really great things, which we've started to see and you'll continue to see more of. How we share information, constantly getting better with how we share information with you, how we share information with our stakeholders, our constituents, ensuring that we're financially prudent. We have the ability to use people's tax money and we take that responsibility very seriously, so we want to make sure we're prudent with that money. And lastly, as we closed out one council term, we provided you with the goals that we accomplished and I'm extraordinarily proud of the team and we're working on the next work plan with you now, which really ties into the goals that you all discussed recently and that will be integrated into the mission of everything we do in the next two years.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time on that. Alderman Mattson?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Spiegel. To my colleagues and to everybody on staff, thank you for all the work. Been here a long time and we continue to get better. Noting a couple points that have been talked about. We used to react to fee increases and things that come up in a reaction way and we challenged the staff to do gradual increases and plan things out. And so when you see little things like that, it's so much better, in my opinion, and I think many people's opinion, that we have gradual increases instead of a big increase, so I thank you for that. We have great financial planning and execution. We challenge you with stuff and you go ahead and do that. And I thank you to keeping our city fiscally responsible. Because of the reports we get and the audits and all, how you do business, we are in great shape and I challenge the mayor and Ms. McGinnis and Ms. Tompkins and the staff, when you go up there, good luck. I think if you take this and show them everything you've done, they can't be anything but impressed. And then it's too bad the media left. I know they always want one particular issue that drives their whole focus, but look at that. If you don't look at any other slide, look at that slide and that should be on the front page of everything. Because I'm so proud to live in Davenport because of stuff like that, so thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank our city administrator and Team Davenport. You know, they got to work hard every day, 24 hours a day to keep Davenport America's greatest city and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
I just wanted to, yeah, I want to add, thank you to my colleagues for bringing that up, but more importantly, obviously, our city administrator, Corey Spiegel, has done an outstanding job, not only in general management, but leading this process. Brendan Wright is our CFO and Assistant City Administrator, but Clay and Mallory Merritt with the stuff that they're doing ongoing basis, but also all the department heads that are here. But I'd be remiss if not mentioning the fact that my colleagues up here, this is not an easy process dealing with the funds. And I want to, we had issues and they all dug in, studied the information even more, found out the answers we need. We're looking at a better process moving forward. It's a great process already. So I want to thank all of you for all the work that you've done as well, because it really is a team effort to make this happen, so thank you very much.
Thank you. This item will move on. Number two is a resolution setting March 14th, 2018, as the date for the sale of General Obligation Corporate and Refunding Bonds, Series 2018A, and taxable General Obligation Corporate and Refunding Bonds, Series 2018B, and approving the preliminary official statement. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Number three is a resolution conveying city-owned parcel W 0425-01, adjacent to the east of 2305 West 67th Street, owned by the Dirksens. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Number four is a resolution conveying a vacant lot parcel G 0034-25, formerly 1012 West Ninth Street, located in Mitchell's Bluff Edition. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Number five is a resolution awarding a contract for the Miracle Field Safety Surface to Surface America Incorporated of Williamsville, New York in the amount of $144,232. This is exciting to see this moving forward. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Number six is a motion authorizing the mayor to sign an intergovernmental 28D agreement with the Davenport Community School District for the assignment of a school liaison officer and a school resource officer. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Alderman Mattson?
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins. Just want to say thanks to the mayor and the staff and the police department and the school district. We have two wonderful officers in our schools. And again, I'm going to keep reemphasizing the importance. A lot of people think police are a school crime bet. No. It's because of the relationships that we're trying to build and the working of the police officers, working with the kids and Chief Sikorsky finding great officers to do this work. And that's what we're doing. Yes, they're there in case something happens, but they're there to build that relationship and to work with our folks and we talk about that stuff all the time and we've done a great job and it's such a great partnership here. So that's what we're doing and you should be proud of our city and school working together.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Anybody else wish to comment on this item? This item will move forward. And number seven is a motion awarding a contract for golf car leasing to Harris Golf Cars of Dubuque, Iowa, in the annual amount of $91,120. Anyone wish to comment on this item from the public? Anyone from council? This item will move forward. Alderman McGinnis, please set the agenda.
Make a motion to move all items on Finance to the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. And we also have a list of purchases that is for informational purposes only, so thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins and Alderman McGinnis. Are there any other ordinance resolutions and motions this evening? Seeing none, we want to allow the public with business. Again, I just want to reiterate the point that this is a listening session and based on open meetings, we can't discuss things. We can get up new ideas, so if there's any from the public who want to say anything, this would be your opportunity.
Adam McWilliams, first word. I just wanted to thank J.J. Condon for buying a ticket to come to the Quad City and Mallards game to help support Special Olympics and also to Ms. Spiegel for donating some money and it's truly appreciated. And we'll be hopefully still working with the Quad City and Mallards for next year. The only thing that might change is the date that we might have it, but I will definitely let you guys all know ahead of time, so thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Anybody else? Are there any other reports of city officials? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Second? Yes, there's a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned. I'll let that one pass.